Hey, everybody. This is the beginning of our first council meeting for the year. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. P- uh, excuse me, Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. So this is kind of an exciting evening. We have the opportunity to introduce and swear in a new council member. We have family members here, we have a lot of friends here, staff people here, my wife is here. And equally as important, I want to mention that longtime council member who's served up here for more years than I want to imagine.
Twenty years, I think.
Twenty years, Tony Nelson, stand up so people can see you, Tony.
Yay!
Nice to have you here. So with that, I'm gonna ask Ruth Perez to go up to the front to be sworn in by our city clerk, Jason Seth. Anybody who wants to come up in front and take pictures, you're welcome to do that.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ruth Perez.
Having been duly appointed?
Having been duly appointed.
To the office of City of Renton?
To the office of City of Renton.
Council position number six?
Council position number six.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Do I will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge the duties of the office?
Discharge the duties of the office.
As prescribed by law?
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability?
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain?
And that I will support and maintain?
The Constitution of the State of Washington?
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the United States.
And the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Gracias. Buenas noches. I would like to tell you that I'm really humbled by the trust and the opportunity that the council members have given me to take this important role in the City of Renton. I am really touched by the kind and warm welcoming of the staff and the citizens of the City of Renton, as well as the family and friends of Terry Pierre. I will try to continue the legacy of this brave and strong woman. Gracias a mi familia y a mis amigos. Los amo con todo mi corazón. And I'm ready, I'm ready to work with the mayor of Renton and my council colleagues. So, let's start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. [applause]
Well, at this time, I think the council would like to party for about fifteen minutes. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to go into recess for fifteen minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Person, that we go onto a recess for fifteen minutes. We'll be going to the conferencing center across the hall. Everybody is welcome to join us. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in recess. I'll call back to order. Jason, do you need to do another roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, next item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Proclamation, National Mentoring Month. Whereas our success as a community depends on helping every child succeed in school and reach their full potential in life, and we realize that young people need a solid foundation of support to help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens, and whereas communities and schools is the only dropout prevention program in the nation proven to increase graduation rates, and this research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their chances of high school graduation and college attendance and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and other risky behaviors, and whereas thousands of Renton's children are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will require more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life, and whereas National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Renton's youth through mentoring, and whereas the mission of communities and schools of Renton is to surround students with a community of support empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim January 2015 to be National Mentoring Month. In the City of Renton, in tribute to the many dedicated individuals who volunteer their time, compassion, and talents to mentor young people, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and to consider giving back to our community as mentors, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this fifth day of January 2015. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council adopt. The proclamation is read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council approve the proclamation. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to Mara Fickstall, who's the mentor program manager, and Akeem Blake, who's one of our mentors.
Thank you, Mayor Law and city council members. I want to thank the city council especially for funding the mentor program through the City Human Services grant. We really appreciate your support in that especially. I would also like to thank any mentors that are here in the room. So if you're a mentor, please stand up. Yay! Thank you, thank you.
Person, do you stand up?
I also want to quickly thank some of our CISR board members who are here. We have a few board members from communities and schools here. So if you would stand up too, say thank you. Thank you for all you do. All right. We appreciate the proclamation so much and making this National Mentoring Month. Mentoring is so important to children in our community. I want to tell you a little bit about 2013, 2014 school year. We had 112 mentors who gave 2,357 hours to the students that they work with. We had 192 matches in our two mentoring programs. Eighty-six percent of our students that we serve live in poverty. Nineteen of those students were homeless, and we have six city employees who were mentors in the last year. I'm glad that it's Mentoring Month because it's a time to highlight the work that mentoring programs are doing around the country. And locally, we match kids with mentors who really help them achieve their best. A lot of the kids that we work with are at risk of academic failure for a variety of reasons. It might be poverty, it might be high mobility, might be that they're in a single parent family, they might be absent a lot from school, they might be not feeling engaged in school, and they might be absent a lot. And so, we put mentors into the school during the school day to meet with students for an hour a week, once a week, to help them engage with school and to combat that dropout rate. What we know is that dropout, dropping out of high school is not good for anyone. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the students. Dropping out leads to a much higher rate of, not only poverty, but also chances, your chances of being involved with police and other activities are much higher if you drop out of high school. So, programs like this are so important because they actually do help students feel like they belong in school. In fact, ninety-seven percent of our students say they feel like they belong in school according to our end-of-the-year surveys. So, we know that mentoring works. Also, national studies have proven that students who have mentors are more likely to stay in school. Our program is a little different than some mentoring programs because our matches are long-term. So, when we match a mentor with a student, we ask for a minimum of a year commitment, but you know what? Our average mentor ends up staying for about five years because they find the program so valuable and because an hour a week is such an easy commitment to make and because those kids are so darn great. And the mentors end up feeling so fulfilled, and they always say that they feel like they got so much more back than they gave. So, I would like to put out a little challenge to some of our council members. I challenge each of you to help find at least one mentor for our children in our schools. I know that people are busy, I know that it might be hard to find time, but I know that you guys are really well-connected in the community, and I know that you can help us find one mentor. So, I have given the city clerk some information about recruiting a mentor, along with my phone number and my email address, so that you can easily give someone my name, my information, and help us to at least recruit seven more mentors for kids. I know I've had emails in the last month from Honeydew, Campbell Hill, and Renton Park Elementary highlighting the need for mentors right at this moment. I would also like to challenge everyone in the audience to think about an hour a week, once a week, a lunchtime that we all might have to give to students and also people watching today. So, I'd like to invite Akeem Blake, who is one of our mentors, to come up and share with you real briefly about his experience mentoring with communities and schools of Renton.
Mara, for those people listening in who are interested in mentoring, how would they get information?
Oh, well, a great way to do that is to go to our website, which is renton.cisw.org, or they can call me. My number is four three zero, or two five three four three zero six six five nine.
Four two five.
Four two five, four three zero six six five nine. That's right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Akeem Blake. I'm new to Renton. Actually, I've been here for three years, so didn't get adjusted, haven't been adjusted yet to the rainy weather. But why I wanted to be a mentor also gives a helping hand in our Renton community, in our Washington community. And also, I've been, I have many mentors through my college. I'm asking back in elementary school all the way up to college to become the person that I am today. And also give that helping hand when your parents, when their parents aren't there. So, my mother worked two jobs, and so, it was just me and my sister, and I didn't have the father figure in my life as I should, so I needed that male, or even that female, there for me. And my experience with the communities and schools of Renton, I'm a mentor at Bremary Elementary School. I get a warm and welcome from the faculty and staff, even though I'm not a Seattle Seahawks fan. Carolina Panther fan, actually.
We'll have police security lead job there.
That's fine. But also, it's just a, it's just a great experience from that warming welcome when I, every Friday when they see me. And also, a great experience from my mentee. Since I've been him since last March, April timeframe, I see a difference in academic success and also just his positive attitude. And also, I love to see his face smiling every Friday. So, we go out and play basketball, or if you want to play Jenga, we can play Jenga, or I can just sit down and just talk, have just a one-on-one conversation. And so, I believe others should join this program and also just be a mentor in general to have a positive influence in a child's life. And also, help become their role model that they don't have. And also, I challenge all men inside this building or outside, outside this building that are even watching to be mentors, because that male figure in a child's life can really change. And so, also help become a future council member in twenty years from now, and also be a financial analyst like myself. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Akeem, and thank you for taking the time to be here, and thanks for being a mentor. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mara. Okay, moving on to administrative report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one item, and that item is just an observation. I'm not sure if it's a direct correlation, but since the Seattle Seahawks moved to Renton, we've had some really successful seasons. And to celebrate the most recent successful season, and Akeem, you're still invited to come to this, even though, even though I'm not sure you ought to wear that Carolina Panthers jersey, but there is a playoff rally this Friday here at Renton City Hall, a Blue Friday Playoff Rally, at the lobby level parking area in preparation for the divisional game Saturday at Century Link Field. We encourage folks to come, enjoy free hot dogs, Seahawks alumni will be there, Sea Gals, Blitz, Blue Thunder, and other Seahawks fans. There will be prizes for the best Seahawks spirit costume and much, much more. Activities begin at about 11:30 a.m. We're also excited to announce that 7/10 ESPN Radio will be broadcasting from our city hall here in the, down there stairs in the foyer area, and they'll show live, so folks can come in and listen in and participate in that. Parking is always a bit of a challenge, but we're just grateful for Sam's Club. They have opened up their parking lot area, so folks are being directed to park in the main parking lot if they can come in. And if you know of groups or organizations who have meetings scheduled at city hall, or if you're part of those groups, just be aware that it's going to be a little busy around the lobby level area. So, we encourage folks to come. It's going to be an exciting time. We're always happy to participate with the Seahawks. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to audience comment. We have a couple of people who've signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. The timer is next to the city clerk, Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in Renton. I just wanted to thank everybody for the tremendous contributions you've been making. Jay has me on a, on a schedule. I could only do a bunch of stuff. And he's one who should talk, because at the very, the guy who started CIS right here, and a lot of other stuff, these are founding guys. All of you are tremendous volunteers, and I just am inviting everybody else who's watching in to help. But we had something, we had a problem with our, with our feeding program. We feed every evening. People can get a meal at 5:30. And we were right against again because of some problems having to do with, with where we could feed. Right now, from Monday through Thursday, anybody who'd like a meal can come down to the Salvation Army and pick one up. But Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we have to make a change. And the mayor and Jay and some other wonderful people got together and provided a place for us to feed. So, we have it at the old Chamber of Commerce, which is sandwiched between Rainier Avenue and the Renton Airport at 300 Rainier Avenue North. So, if someone would like a meal, like some company, not everybody comes for the same reasons. Some people come because they want to have someone to eat with, that they can have conversation. Whatever it is, whatever you're hungry for, it's there. And so, that's it. And we appreciate your help. We also have people on the dais who provide an awful lot of food for what we provide out there. We just have tremendous, our city is a city of volunteers and helpers and contributors. That is who we are. We have wonderful diversity, we have wonderful spirit. I think it's only proper that the Seahawks should be here and that we give them a warm welcome, and they appreciate Renton because we are them. So, I'd like to thank you all for your help and your support, and just keep it coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Next is Alex Wilford.
Mr. Mayor, while Alex is coming up, just to clarify with Howard, the feeding program still is at the Salvation Army Monday through Thursday, correct?
Correct.
And then at the 300, or 300 North Rainier on Friday through Sunday?
Council members, mayor, thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. It's been a real fun night, lots of joy and everything like that. Congratulations, Councilmember Perez, and Happy New Year. For the record, my name is Alex Wilford. I'm here as a representative of the Master Builders Association. It's nearly 3,000 member companies. I'm here to address a number of ordinances that are on the docket for first reading this evening, specifically B, E, F, and G. These proposed amendments to the development regulations unquestionably result in fewer homes being built in the City of Renton. The MBA is concerned about the effects of downzoning and would respectfully request that the city take time to consider other alternatives. According to a report by the National Association of Home Builders, they quantified the benefits of economic activity within King and Snohomers Counties. The City of Renton loses significantly every time one home isn't built. Specifically, the City of Renton loses $283,000 in local income, $43,000 in taxes and other revenue, three jobs. Annually, this continues, but to less to a degree. $40,000 in local income, $11,000 in taxes and other revenue. Additionally, in response to a request by the council on September 22, 2014, that the MBA itself take into consideration the effect of density on existing home values, the MBA took that request seriously. We conducted a report, provided direct quotations and direct references to all the sources that we used, so you can double-check it, look at it, consider it. And what that report found, which is supported by Yale, Harvard, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, is that increased density in areas where housing is in significant demand, for example, in the City of Renton, increased density doesn't negatively affect existing home value, but in fact, it can actually increase the equity in a home. A number of your citizens and a number of your stakeholders understand that this is a concern to them and their businesses. And I have in a packet right here over thirty pages of comments regarding stakeholders and citizens in this city that are very concerned about how this is affecting them and will continue to affect them. Futurewise stated that the proposed amendments in ordinance D-104, as it was at that time referenced, will not achieve the benefits of density outlined in the Growth Management Act, but instead will lead to low-density sprawl. They further state that over seven homes per acre is necessary for transit-supportive densities. The Seattle County Realtors Association stated that downzoning will exacerbate the lack of housing affordable to workers, subvert the buildable lands review process, and that this is fundamentally inconsistent with the GMA. Builders that have been doing business in the City of Renton are having a hard time already finding viable projects because there are critical areas, there are other things to take into consideration, and not every lot is perfectly amicable to a proposed development. With the proposed development, it will make it, according to them, nearly impossible. The statement has been echoed by the real-life examples of a number of your residents. For example, the Mead family, that will be having a hard time providing for the care of their grandmother because they can't build the extra lot and they can't pay for the care for their grandmother. And there are a number of other residents that have lost their nest eggs and their retirements because they can't sell their land. It's not for lack of effort. They've tried to sell it and had sales in line three or four times, but the builders walked away. With this in mind, is the MBA respectfully requests that the council take the opportunity to consider alternatives that may not have such heavy consequences on particular individuals. And we're happy to provide any reports, happy to answer any questions you'd like. At this time, I thank you for your time and appreciate your reach out if you have any questions.
Good, thank you. Next to Cindy Carver.
Doesn't move.
No.
I'm Cindy Carver, C-A-R-V-E-R. I've lived in the Renton, in the City of Renton since, I'm not going to tell you when, or else you might guess how old I am. But I work for John O'Scott, and I'm representing one of my clients that couldn't be here. They have a couple of properties down in Kennedale that they've been saving to be, for their retirement and everything. And in the middle of the process of negotiating a sale, he started dealing with his wife with cancer treatment. And so, you know, we had to delay it, and so, I'm, you know, he could make it down to the meeting you had before, so I'm just voicing an opinion for him. He said, just to let them know, they totally understand how you want our, especially down in Kennedale, you know, with the Seahawks down there. Everybody, everybody wants to live there. And, and he totally understands how congested that area is, would be, but he wanted to just voice, giving him some time to at least get, you know, his process through and, and get it so he could build and, you know, pay for the cancer treatments, he says.
Okay, thank you. Next is Roy Boyer.
Well, my name's Roy Boyer. I'm B-O-Y-E-R. I'm a resident of Renton. In fact, our families lived here for some thirty-three years, and our neighbors, Bill and Marilyn Spearley, have had the nursery, I don't know if you know where the Alpine Nursery is, for nearly forty-five years. They had to close it down this year, though, you know, because of all the competition, you know, with Lowe's and Walmarts and all those kinds of things. It's kind of, he ended up closing it this year. In fact, this year, we got annexed into the City of Renton. We've raised our kids here, we've worked hard here. All these years, we've paid our taxes to city officials and such. We've always been good citizens who've contributed and not takers, not even expected or felt entitled to anything at all, but they built a sewer line, you know, in front of the Alpine Nursery, and in order to be annexed into the city, we had to get annexed into the city in order to hook up to the sewer. So, now that's what we are. And we spent about a year and a half to get hooked, annexed into the city. We don't have a pension. We've just worked hard, and our retirement plan was basically the land. That's where our retirement plan was. And we lived in a rural area and now have moved into an urban area. And what I find ironic here is a lot of these new regulations and everything are applying more to the rural area that we came from. So, we've had three willing buyers, willing buyers to buy a place that are backed out because of all the uncertainties and the new regulations that are coming down on, on the area. So, I guess, I guess in closing, I just wanted, I ran across an article that came out of the Fraser Institute. It's a kind of a Canadian think tank, and they've, based on size of government, is their rankings and legal system and property rights. They rank how each of the countries around the world have economic freedom. And, you know, you'd think America would be number one. We're now ranked eighteenth out of all the countries. So, you know, I just want to ask everybody here, you know, I mean, what are we, I want to keep our freedoms and our property rights, you know, I mean, what are we willing to give up, to give up more of those things? That's all I have.
Good, thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, council, next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
If I may, can I ask that the leadership of planning and development is changing over this year, and I was just wondering if, as a new chair, if I could ask the previous chair to remind us a little bit about where we are with these regulations and interim, we put, we're putting in place basically...
Well, we passed interzoning last September, October, maybe even November, I can't remember now, and all these regulations were currently... And all these regulations were currently on for first reading tonight, are items that have kind of come...
Following the interim zoning?
Yes.
Okay. And the Planning and Development Committee's been reviewing these?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the Planning Commission as well?
Yes. Thoroughly vetted.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I know Alex said that he had 30 pages of comments. I'll bet you I could come up with a lot more than that from very unhappy residents over the last few years since development has picked back up. Everything from complaining about developers coming in and building property or homes that are not characteristic of the neighborhood, creating shade where there never has been because it's a huge monstrosity next to a Rambler, builders working on Sundays, I think you've experienced some of that, Armando, working till 10:00 at night, and with seeming disregard for the regulations. So I'm sympathetic with the building community, but residents also need to be heard. And from what I've been hearing over the last couple of years is they're really angry with what we've allowed. And that's where I'm coming from. I want to be fair to everyone. I want to remind the building community that the zoning we put is interim, and that we said from the beginning, it's not going to be a blanket R6, that we just needed the time to review studies that have been done on what areas should be what density, to better represent those individual neighborhoods and the community as a whole. And none of what we're looking at tonight is to do with zoning, right? No, it's, it's things, as you said, that we've been talking about all last years, we update our comp plan, which had not been updated for 20 years. And things have changed. Renton took more than our share of growth, and I think statistics show that, if I remember right. So I just wanted to add that, that this, a lot of thought have gone into this. Randy, you've even, up in the Highlands, had neighbors, I know you've heard from them, I've heard from them, I've heard from them at Tiffany Park, in Talbot Park, South Renton. It's not just Kennedale. Kennedale just happens to be one that is hot. But I just wanted to put that out there, that this comes with a lot of thought, and I think staff has brought us options every, every bit of the way, and given us different visualizations so that we can make good decisions. To say that staff is leading us is wrong. Council asked staff and said, we're tired of getting beat up. Wait, we're going to be looking at the comp plan. It's 20 years old. We need to take care of the people that have been living here for 20, 30, 40 years. And I do respect that some people have the value in the land, and staff is going to work on an individual basis. They worked really hard specifically for some properties in Kennedale. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Any other comments? I think I just...
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, yes, I have a comment. And I understand the, this is a, this is a situation that has some high concerns and emotions on both sides, from people that are opposed to the type of development that we've seen happening over the course of time, and people who have a vested interest in their, their land as their retirement and their future. And it's very difficult for me to ignore that, especially when there are the number of people who are coming forward and making some very legitimate arguments about how they're being impacted financially. I, I would have hoped that we could have figured out a way to find more of a middle ground. I understand our argument, I understand our justification, but I'm not satisfied that the outcome is still going to result. And we're not talking about a small number of people. We're talking about, and we're not talking about, you know, just one particular area. We're talking about around the city, you know. So I still have reservations about moving forward with this for that reason. I'd love to be the pragmatist that easily just says, yeah, you know, this makes sense, and let's just go ahead and do it. But I can't ignore the consequences that are going to be received on a wide scale by a number of people who, you know, all they have is, for the most part, probably in their land and their properties. And I would have hoped that we could have worked it out somehow, some way, spent a little bit more time on it, you know, go outside and find some new ideas or some creative way to figure out a way to get a little bit closer in creating a win-win type of a scenario. And I appreciate the work that the city's done, staff done. I know you worked hard. I appreciate the work that our Planning Commission has done, Planning Committee has done. But the net outcome, as it rests tonight, still creates an impact that is, for me, is very difficult to bear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, what we are doing is giving time for a more studied approach, rather than, this is going to be forever. This is going to, this whole thing is a work in progress, and unfortunately, the way our system works, if we don't do something like this, somebody can get a vested interest in a piece of property, and then no matter what we decide is best, we can't change it because they have a vested interest in that piece of property. I do feel sorry for people, and we have, as a council, made suggestion in several cases that staff take a look at how we could work out their problems, because there are some really unique problems that even staying with the current zoning would not work for the people. So this gives the city time, and it gives the public time, to take a longer look at it and, and come up with the best plan. Not saying that it'll stay where it is, I won't say that it isn't, but it gives us time to have a more thorough discussion.
And I understand that, and I recognize that. I'm just wondering if, at the same time, while we're looking to prevent, you know, a greater problem in that, that area, that we can preserve or create some form of assurance to people who have vested interest in their, their future, in terms of what they will be allowed to do with their property somehow. I'm, I know you've vetted this up and down. I did not attend all of those meetings, so you obviously have a lot more information than I have in terms of the conversations you've, you've held. But I'm just curious as to whether or not there is another alternative that can land us, point us, direct us to an outcome that has more of a win-win feel about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
So, and I, I think Alex will attest to this. I've probably, last year, spoke with the master builders more than any of the council members on the dais, as Chair of Planning and Development, working with him, trying to find some middle ground, trying to find that win-win. And, and I've said this to Alex, so I'm not saying anything out of school. I feel like everything that we received from the master builders took us back to where we were. It didn't, there was no middle ground. Now, they'll say that's because they feel like where we are is too far from where we should be, and that we need to go back. But we've got to do something, and I, I, like the rest of my colleagues, feel for the people who were planning on their property being their retirement. But we've got to find a way to do something, to do some smart zoning, to try to maintain the character of some of our neighborhoods.
And I agree with that.
Hold on. And some of the things that we have here tonight, retaining walls and things like that, in my opinion, and from what staff has told us as a planning and development committee, won't, in my opinion, won't have the impact that we are being led to believe it will.
So, and I, with all respect, I understand that, but we're not just hearing from the master builders, as an organization, we're hearing from our own residents.
But we're hearing from residents that the master builders have gone out and recruited to come talk to us.
Do you know that?
I do know.
You know that for a fact?
I do.
You're saying that all of the residents who are...
I'm not saying all. I didn't say all. I said, we're hearing from...
We have to be clear about that, because that's a very broad, you know, that's a very broad implication.
I didn't say all.
Okay, so, you guys can sidebar if you wanted to discuss it. Did you have another question or comment?
No, I don't have another question. I just want to be clear about this. And, and I want to just, you know, just make my, my feeling known about this, that, you know, I appreciate all the work that our staff has done, I appreciate the work that the commission has done, the committee has done, but the outcome still points us in a direction where there's going to be some losers. And the losers are going to be our residents, some of our residents. And, and I just would hope that we could have, you know, maybe not have missed something that could have created a different outcome. I don't know. It's a question.
Yes, Mr. Cornyn.
Yeah, I would just, just so there's no mysteries or secrets going into this year, I would say that I would be looking to, to further refine the regulations, picking up where, where Mr. Prince has left it, the committee's left it, to, to do exactly what he's talking about, to try and match the character of development in each of these neighborhoods. So if somebody, you know, loves the Kennedale neighborhood because it's a beautiful neighborhood with a sense of neighborhood, with, with beautiful vegetation, I think the expectation should be, yeah, if they have an existing lot, even if it's 5,000 square feet, if all the neighbors' lots are 5,000 square feet, we should probably find some way that they could build on that vacant lot, but build it consistent with the character of the neighborhood that they're treasuring so much. And so that might mean that we have to, we have to adjust the setbacks, or the height standards, or the, the tree retention so that they don't obliterate what's there in the process of enjoying everybody else's investment in that community. And it may be different, I think, from neighborhood to neighborhood there.
Yeah, absolutely.
The R8 zone sort of is a blanket zone that extends to a lot of different environments, and I think we, we are going to have to do the work to look to match it. And I, and I think that I hear the committee from last year saying that that's, that's what they're trying to do. So if, if anybody, I'd say in the community, I mean, I also can empathize that it's, it's a difficult time for people that had projects in process, in the process. So we would have to move out fairly swiftly. And again, I think anybody that had a, you know, a platted lot that, that they'd been paying taxes on separately, to me, should be at the front of the line in terms of us trying to find regulations that would allow them to do that. I think somebody who had a house on a previously, who has a house on a previously-platted lot that had the idea that they could divide that lot in two and put a second house, in my view, that's kind of going to be a lower priority, that somebody shouldn't have counted on that necessarily as part of their retirement plan, because that's, you know, an existing platted single lot with a house on it isn't always entitled to have a second house on it. I think vacant acreages, it's going to depend a lot on exactly what the particular neighborhood is and what the comprehensive plan is pointing to. But certainly, I don't think there's a person on the council that would want to deny people fair returns, investments they've made, and housing that, that's in character with the existing housing. So that's, I can see it's a tall order going into this committee.
But you're the man for the job.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and this will be the last thing I say on this. It's been 20 years since we've done the comp plan. There was bound to be some growing pains. Staff had a Herculean effort to go through to get this done, where they thought it was just going to be nibbling around the edges, and instead they saw that there needed to be an overhaul. So this is real hard work, and with real hard work, there's always going to be a little bit of pain.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have 17 items for council approval. Are there any items that council members would like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll item I.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda minus item I.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Cornyn, that council approve the consent agenda minus item I. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I talked with Councilman Cornyn, and he agreed that fee waivers should be in the Finance Committee, so therefore I move that item I be referred to the Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Cornyn, that item I on the consent agenda be referred to the Finance Committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'll, I'll only point out, I was all too happy to remove one item.
It's a good hang.
You can have more requests like that.
Okay. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Let's see here, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez, probably not many committees that you've served yet, huh?
No unfinished business. No unfinished business.
Okay. Mr. Bravoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cornyn?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Ms. Palmer?
Is this yours or mine, the finance?
It's his.
Okay, okay. I was just going from last year. I get confused on these. No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has one report. I just want to point out that we're really a working committee.
Finance Committee, committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves her payment on January 5, 2015, claim vouchers 334, 564 through 335, 357, seven wire transfers and two payroll runs with benefit withholding payments totaling $10,840,462.83, and payroll vouchers including 1,446 direct deposits and 116 payroll checks totaling $3,267,293.80. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Will the council concur with the report?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Taylor, that council approve the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution and seven ordinances for first reading.
The resolution is regarding an interlocal agreement with the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of agreement with King County and the cities of Auburn, Bellevue, Federal Way, Esauqua, Kent, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Redmond, Seattle, and Taquilla, related to the future negotiations of a Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network operator interlocal cooperation agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for first reading is a Title IV Development Regulation, applicability of Urban Design Regulations. This was, and all these ordinances were approved via the Planning and Development Committee report on December 8, 2014. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 43100B1 of Chapter 3 Environmental Regulations in the overlay districts of Title IV Development Regulations of the City Code by amending the applicability of the Urban Design Regulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cornyn.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cornyn, second by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding maximum lot area building coverage and impervious surface area regulations. This, too, was approved last December 8. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending sections 4210, 4220, 4260, 42100, 42110, 42115, 42120, and 42130 of Chapter 2 Zoning Districts Uses and Standards, sections 4480, 4490, 4495, 44100, and 44110 of Chapter 4 Citywide Property Development Standards of Title IV Development Regulations, and section 874 of Chapter 4 Noise Level Regulations of Title VIII Health and Sanitation of the City Code by amending the regulations related to maximum lot area, building coverage, and impervious surface area, and creating a new residential six-dwelling units-per-acre zone. of Title VIII Health and Sanitation of the City Code by amending the regulations related to maximum lot area, building coverage, and impervious surface area, and creating a new residential six-dwelling units per acre zone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Is there, do we have to have a reason for an abstention on this? Mr. Warren?
Mayor, a council member that abstains on a majority vote like that is deemed to have voted with the majority.
Could you repeat that, sir?
Yes, if you abstain from the vote and the motion carries, then you're deemed to have voted with the majority.
Then in that case, I'll vote no.
Okay, so the ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding the creation of tracks for utilities, open space, critical areas, and other similar areas. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 4350 of Chapter 3 Environmental Regulations and Overlay Districts, section 4630 of Chapter 6 Street Utility Standards, sections 47130, 47190, 47200, and 47220 of Chapter 7 Subdivision Regulations, and 48120 of Chapter 8 Permits, General, and Appeals of Title IV of the City Code, amending the regulations regarding the creation of tracks to contain utilities, open space, critical areas, and other similar areas that warrant protection or serve a public purpose.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I mean, move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next ordinance is regarding wireless communication facilities. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending sections 4260, 4280, 42110, 42120, and 42130 of Chapter 2 Zoning Districts' Uses and Standards, sections 4495 and 44140 of Chapter 4 Citywide Property Development Standards, sections 4930 of Chapter 9 Permits Specific, and section 411230 of Chapter 11 Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations, and section 5195 of Chapter 19 Telecommunications, Licenses, and Franchises of Title V Finance and Business Regulations of the City Code, amending the wireless communication facilities regulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next regulation is regarding, or the next ordinance is regarding fences, hedges, and retaining walls. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 4440 of Chapter 4 Citywide Property Development Standards, and sections 41160 and 411180 of Chapter 11 Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, amending the regulations regarding fences, hedges, and retaining walls, and adding new definitions of fence, retaining wall, retaining wall height, retaining wall height exposed, and rockery.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding tree retention and land clearing. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 44130 of Chapter 4 Citywide Property Development Standards, section 48120 of Chapter 8 Permits, General, and Appeals, and section 41180 and 411200 of Chapter 11 Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code, amending the regulations regarding tree retention and land clearing, and adding, amending, and deleting certain definitions related to trees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it.
And the final ordinance is regarding administrative code interpretations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 44160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement, sections 4280 and 42110 of Chapter 2 Zoning Districts' Uses and Standards, section 4350 of Chapter 3 Environmental Regulations and Overlay Districts, sections 4470 and 44100 of Chapter 4 Citywide Property Development Standards, section 4540 and 4560 of Chapter 5 Building and Fire Prevention Standards, section 4630 of Chapter 6 Street and Utility Standards, section 48120 of Chapter 8 Permits, General, and Appeals, section 4960, 49150, 49200, and 49250 of Chapter 9 Permits Specific, and sections 41130, 41140, 411120, and 411150 of Chapter 11 Definitions of Title IV Development Regulations, and section 878 of Chapter 7 Noise Level Regulations of Title VIII Health and Sanitation of City Code by amending certain regulations and amending specific definitions pursuant to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Administrative Code Interpretations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. You only have to do that one more time. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items for new business. One, I'd like to refer the parking garage metro lease into the committee of the hall for briefing.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, I, we've got it down for...
I know, but I was still told I had to refer it.
Oh, okay. All right, and you second it?
Yes, sir.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Palmer, that the city center parking garage metro lease issue be referred to committee of the hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, and seeing that we've done that, committee of the hall on Monday, January 12th at 6:00 PM will be discussing the, in the council chambers, will be discussing the city center parking garage metro lease.
Okay.
And then, secondly, I'd like to present to former council president Don Person his plaque for his service to the council as council president last year.
Nice.
Thank you. Beautiful.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
I thought they would have given me a banana or an apple. But thank you very much, it's very much appreciated.
Ms. Perez?
Um...
Any new business?
Yeah. The community service committee...
That's beautiful.
...that we have met on January 12th has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, the utilities committee that would normally be scheduled for January 12th has also been canceled, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a planning and development committee meeting for January 12th, Monday, at 3:30 PM, and that's in the council conference room. There are four items on that agenda. There's one of them that was on the written agenda that we've actually moved to the finance committee. So the four items are the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Resolution, the Sunset Area Redevelopment Resolution, and the amendment to RMC 4121OC, rental housing incentive for the affordable housing definition. And just to check, Don, that is the item that we moved to finance right then?
Right.
Yep, okay, very good. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
I don't have any committee meetings to announce, but I would like to, I know we're going to be having a briefing, so all of us are aware of the current situation with the parking garage and the metro lease, but I'd also like to refer that into the Transportation Department.
Second.
Thank you. And the reason is so that we can delve down a little bit deeper and keep an eye on it, and give you whatever assistance the administration needs.
Terrific. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Palmer, second by Mr. Prince, to refer the city center parking garage and metro topic into the Transportation Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, and if there's any specific information that you want us to get free, just let us know.
I want to know how many people get off the Sound Transit 560 and 566 and go into the parking garage and use the metro.
And live outside the city.
Yeah. The only other thing I just wanted to bring up, that when we were going through those ordinances, it's an overview of what's inside of it. And item B was people heard residential six-dwelling units per acre. That's simply creating the R6. And it's, as we've learned over the last year, we are a rare jurisdiction that has not had R6, which most jurisdictions that have it, that's their go-to. So this isn't saying it's a blanket six, it's saying we're going to create it, and now, for the next few months, we're going to be looking at where that makes sense in the city.
You're right.
I just wanted to clarify that.
That's good.
So people won't go out of here saying, "But they just loaned us." No, we just are giving ourselves the ability to now do that. And that's all. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any committee reports, but I have one piece that I thought was just fantastic news, that in a conversation with the mayor at Christmas time, about a lady who got two Christmas trees, and both, assuming she was a grandmother from the story, she got two Christmas trees to bring home, and the Christmas tree lot wouldn't help him tie it to the top of her car. So she tied him as best she could. She pulled out on the Rainier Avenue, and guess what happened? The trees fell off, and guess who was right behind her? One of Renton Police's finest. And, you know, her initial reaction was, "Oh, my God, now I'm in trouble." And he said, "You know what? Let me help you. Those will fit in the back of my SUV." And followed her home with the Christmas trees. Those are the kinds of things that we don't hear enough about that our officers do on a daily basis. So I just want to thank the officer, I don't know him personally, but I think that was just a wonderful Christmas story that the public should hear. With that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Person. Appreciate that. Okay, audience comment? Was there anybody who wanted the opportunity to address the council?
Good evening, my name's Mark Martinez, I live in the Renton Highlands. You know, I got to be honest with you, oh, congratulations, Ruth, to your appointment. It's very good to see that good people are getting, being appointed to the office. So I wanted to say, I think it's, the conversation you guys had about the ordinance was really refreshing to hear, that there's both sides being discussed, that there's real progress being made on these issues. For me, housing is kind of a, you know, a personal, a personal subject. I have, I'm in the process of becoming in the market for a new home. And, you know, I've had four, three close friends who's actually moved out of the city because of the cost of housing. And, you know, I moved here when I was 13, and we moved over by Maplewood Heights Elementary. I don't know if you, I went, and I went to Hazen High School, and that area looks absolutely nothing like it did back in the 90s and early 2000s. In fact, the lot right across the street of the elementary school there, it used to be one big house, probably five acres, and now it's probably 40 houses that are all like 4,000, 5,000 square feet houses. And the adjacent houses are, you know, rather modest homes. So that's kind of a new neighborhood that is, in my opinion, out of scope from the rest of the neighboring houses. And you can see that literally all over the city, and, you know, when you look at the price of some of these houses, now, the average income, I think the Seattle Times had the median income of King County like $77,000, $75,000 for a dual-income household. And, you know, you do your standard, four times your income is the amount of house you can afford, and that's about 30, you know, 32, $350,000 max. And a lot of these new houses that are being built are, you know, 500, I've got my Zillow set up to send me any time, because my wife and I have four kids, so anytime there's a four-bedroom house with three bathrooms and a two-car garage, it sends me a thing. And I get small houses that are 1,400, 1,800 square feet that were built back in the 60s, and new houses that are 28, 3,500 square feet that are $500,000. And so for me, trying to find a house is very problematic. I wouldn't want to say somebody, "Don't buy, don't build a nice house," because, hey, you know, who wouldn't want to live in a half a million dollar house? But, you know, it's from, I guess my point is that it's nice to hear that there's good progress being made, and that the council is communicating back and forth with each other, and trying to do things that are in the vested interest of the community. It's very good to hear that. So, thank you.
Thank you.